Let's all get up and do the baby dance.
Yes.
This theme dance is probably the oldest Delaware dance we have, probably. It is an old dance. And what it's about is about coming together, just like we're doing here. Our Delaware's coming together and celebrating, having a good time, celebrating that we've had a meal. In those days, they used to celebrate the three sisters, the beans, the squash, and the corn. And it's all about coming together and celebrating. So we hope you Delawares, all you Delawares, join with us because it goes back to our culture hundreds of years. And we're desperately trying to keep as much of our culture together as possible. And so we really appreciate the Delawares dancing, the ones that can get out there and dance. We don't expect everybody to, because some of us are not in that good shape to be dancing around. But those that can do it, we sure appreciate it if you join us. And it's not just for Delawares, it's to appreciate a good time. And so all of you are invited, whether you're Delaware or not. Amen. Okay, I need a, it's man, woman, man, woman. It's just like a song dance, very much similar to a song dance. Except we're holding hands.
Hey, I'm Lynn.
The colored?
Colored, gray.
No.
Fifty cents a piece.
Four dollars?
Four dollars. Go get your napkin, heavy napkin. Might want to go get your napkin up there, grab one.
Jack, thank you for leading us all in a good baby dance. It's now 1:13. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And ask the colored guard to present the colors. Next, I'd like to give a big applause.
Colored guard attention.
I'd like to give a big applause to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Colored guard attention.
I would like this time to introduce the chair of our Veterans Committee, Kenny Brown. And let Kenny introduce every member of the colored guard. And immediately following that, Tanya Anna from the War Mothers would like to formally present these five service flags. Kenny?
Thank you. Hope I turn this on right. The Bonaphe Veterans, colored guard members that are on duty today. John Sumter, US Army Special Forces. Homer Scott, US Navy. David Endon, US Navy. Myself, US Army. Bringing in other colors of the different forces is Roger Stiller. And names, I'm old. Jack Tatum. And Waters.
Air Force.
Air Force. Tom Thomas. Witten Sumter.
Marines.
Would, Tanya, would you like to announce the gift of the War Mothers to the tribe?
My name's Tanya Anna, I'm the president of the Delawares War Mothers. This is our princess, Skyskimmika, she's here to represent today as well. If I could have the War Mothers just do a handshake, so everybody can see the War Mothers that are here today. We've worked hard the last few years to raise money, we've done fundraising, we're doing fundraising today. So feel free to come by and check out our items. We purchased the military flags they were first used this last Indian summer down Bartlesville. They paraded in during that, this is the second time they came in. We would like to have the flags displayed up here in the dining hall at all times when not in use. Walter Donnell was the one that made our flag stand over against the wall. So with the permission of the tribal council, if it would be okay with you guys, if we would have these displayed up here at all times when we're not using them.
Thank you, veterans. Also, thanks to the 158 veterans. We have their photos on the wall. At this time, I would like to ask my elder Mary Walters to come forward and lead us in a word of prayer.
Let's bow our heads. Our dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this special day. Father, we thank you for all the many blessings you bestow upon us. We thank you for the Delawares and the friends and the families that have gathered here today. We ask you a safe trip, a safe trip home. Father, we just can't give you enough thanks for your goodness. And we thank you for all the ones that are here. We thank you for the council and the work they do. Father, help us, help us to be faithful and to be willing to do what we're asked. We just ask your blessing and to be with us throughout this meeting. These things we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Well, the colored guard, please, post the colors.
Colored guard attention. Follow the staff.
Please be seated. It's now 1:22. I'm afraid that we lack a corps of 100. Could the registration department, please, provide the information of how many Delaware tribal members are present? There are only 55 registered tribal members in attendance. So I must announce that our general council lacks a corps. However, this is a regular meeting of the tribal council of the Delaware tribe that occurs once each year in November. So we will continue on with a tribal council meeting. And every tribal member and others in the audience will be given a chance to speak, ask their questions at an appropriate time, as is listed on the agenda. So I'm announcing that this is a tribal council meeting. Could I hear a motion of the tribal council to approve the agenda?
One second.
Would Secretary Nikki Michael, please, call the role of the tribal council?
Chief. Chief Chester Brooks?
Here.
Assistant Chief Bonnie Joe Griffin?
Here.
Secretary Nikki Michael?
Here.
Treasurer Anita Shea?
Here.
Member Annette Ketchum?
Here.
Member Nate Young?
Here.
Member Michelle Holly?
Here.
I would like to say in opening about each of my tribal council members. Nate Young on the ride. Michelle Holly. Assistant Chief Bonnie Joe Griffin. Secretary Dr. Nikki Michael. And Treasurer Anita Shea. And Councilwoman Annette Ketchum are all working hard for our Delaware tribe. I, as the chief, certainly appreciate all of their efforts and continued efforts. Let's give the tribal council a big hand. At this time, I'd like to recognize all of our staff, starting with Dana Morell. Would you please stand up, Dana? I would also like to introduce Angela Krebs, that was out on the receptionist desk. Angela's back in town. And I would like to introduce our tribal operations manager, Alan Barnes. And these three employees are doing an excellent job. Let's give all three of them a big hand. Alan is gonna introduce the rest of our employees that are here. Would you come forward, Alan, and get every employee to stand up? And we'll give everybody a big hand.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chief, assistant chief, tribal council persons. I'd like to welcome everyone and simply say, those of you that know me, know that I can take a lot of time up here, but I won't do that, I will be brief. But I would like to introduce, turn up the volume, this is a bit. Well, I won't even repeat myself. But I simply want to introduce our different departments and our department heads, as far as our staff as well. Standing, I'll just do it, immediately to my right is our IT department head coordinator, Johnny Barker. Will he withstand? Then we also have our cultural resources department, which is led by Anita Mathis. And she also does have her staff. And before I continue on, let me tell you, as far as each of our different departments are concerned, as you can see, we're all set up here for you to come by and visit with them regarding any questions that you may have, that is pertinent to their department or pertinent to your needs. So we certainly want to invite you to do that. And I always put in a plug for Anita because of the wonderful items she does have available to tribal members and to those visitors that are interested in our tribe and our tribe's culture. Sitting next to Anita, we have Dr. Bryce Obermeyer, who is in our historic preservation office. Actually, Bryce has other staff members, and he can explain what they do, if you have any questions regarding that. Our environmental program, which I know you probably have a lot of questions for Jimmy Johnson and his efforts in trying to get another green type of recycling company to come back to Bartlesville, as Jimmy is spearheading that, that's Jimmy Johnson. Our Delaware tribe housing program, headed up by Ron Scott and his staff. I do want to mention Larissa Purrier, just simply because she has our light heat program, which is one of our social services. And as you'll notice, as we go down the line, we have our social service program there. And next to Larissa, of course, is also our Indian child welfare and our community services. Well, let me do this, let me go ahead and then break away and say, our accounting department, head by Jean Lewis. And, well, let's do that. And then, of course, I also, back in that office is Mike Taylor also, who is our human resources department head. Our child support services, which is one of our new programs that is headed up by Curtis Sunega, my predecessor, and has done an excellent job and really is a very valuable program to the Delaware tribe, and glad to have him and his staff. Enrollment department, which is Courtney Leslie Folly, Chris Miller, and have done a great job this afternoon. So I think I get to say, Last of the Leaks is our elder nutrition program. It's our Title VI federally funded program that we serve lunch, not only on a daily basis, but we do have the other services that are involved with that Title VI program. And that would be Mary Randall, who is our department director. And then, of course, our valuable staff, and they may be hidden back there, but I will say, Archie Elvington, our cook. And then Mary Lucy Young. And then we are involved with Grand Gateway in regards to using their services, and they're a very important service. And that would also be Thomas Selby. And as I try to, I feel like I'm receiving some sort of award and trying to mention everyone, I, you know, I forget. But in our accounting department, also probably our longest, and that's probably the reason I forget, our longest term employee that we've had is G. I forget, our longest term employee that we've had is G. D. Parks. So if I've left out anyone, I apologize, but I've... I did. Yep, we got her. Well, and staff, okay. Right, so I think we're good. Thank you.
The add one that's not here is Jumeirah Menthif in the Panoply Language. I think he's normally here, so if it's odd, he's not. Okay. Let him know we recognized him.
And speaking of recognition, I would ask that all the members of the Delaware Trust Board please stand up. That'd be Mary Waters, the assistant chairman, John Sumter, the treasurer, Homer Scott. Homer is, are you still the chairman of the veterans, Homer? Your culture preservation, I'm sorry. And Roger Stewart on the veterans committee. The, you know, way back twenty-seven years ago, it used to be said that there was a tribal council and the trust board that has been founded. The trust board used to say, yeah, but we've got all the money. That's no longer so, although we do still administer all of the trust funds and the trust programs such as community services, education, veterans and elders committees. Let's give all of these trust board members a big hand. And last but certainly not least, I want to introduce our tribal judicial system. Don Mason is here. Rick Barnes. And Charles Grant. Well, Rick, Don, and Charles, please stand, and let's give them a big hand. Also, our new, our newly operating child enforcement department, understand is having its first court case Monday, and our judges are very well prepared to sit on that case. I would also, at this time, I'd like to recognize Laura Maynor for making... It's hard to see from out there in the audience, but there's a new drop on the table up here. Laura, will you please stand? And we also have a certified parliamentarian at this meeting, and she was so kind to be here on short notice, Shannon Walker. Let's give her a shout. I am, we've also got several members of the Kansas Delaware and Idaho Delawares in attendance at our meeting. I would ask that all the Idaho Delawares and Kansas Delawares please stand. And we've got a place on the agenda for here that the groups met with us on Saturday morning in Delaware Days and presented us a formal joint proposal, which we will talk about at least today later on in the program. Let's give the Idaho and Kansas Delawares a hand of appreciation. Could the tribal council secretary please read item 10, rules of conduct for the meeting?
Yes, sir. Rules of conduct for the meeting, tribal council secretary. Forum of at least one hundred voting members. Roberts rules of order, credentials, and verification of voting members. D, time allowed for speakers and to introduce timers. E, counters. F, minutes and recording.
We, we actually set a limit on times allowed to speak of three minutes. And of course, everybody here is gonna get their chance to voice their concerns or ask Is there any discussion about the rules of this tribal council meeting now? Nancy, something?
I was wondering how you came to the three-minute talking. As little as I am anymore, it takes more than three minutes for me to make my points. I was wondering why you set a time limit of three minutes? Why not six, nine, something like that? Because I don't think I could say a whole lot that I really want to say in three minutes. Is there any way to prolong that time, or is that a set time?
Thank you, Nancy. Is there any council member here that has an objection to extending that time? Now, I will leave it... How much time you need. Titus Frenchman?
I have a question in regard to the agenda. Why has the old business and new business section been left off?
The only answer I can think to that is that there was no old business since we didn't have the quorum last year. But all of the staff could...
There, we do have new business to discuss right now, so I'd like to see the new business put on the agenda.
Well, yeah, we've got plenty of it. We've got plenty of council new business to discuss, since there's no quorum.
So that's back on the agenda?
I'm sorry, Titus, I didn't hear you.
I don't see it on the present agenda, so you're gonna add it back on to the agenda now?
We will, if you want to.
Please, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And old business. Old and new.
There was no old business. We didn't have one.
Does a council member wish to make a motion to add those two items to the agenda?
I'll make second motion to add business and old and new business to the agenda.
There, a second?
I'll second. We've never actually passed the agenda yet, so...
Motion been made and seconded to add old business and new business to the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
That was three opposed, four yes. Let the agenda be altered. Jack, thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to be sure that I understand and make clear, general council, the general council, this is not a general council meeting, this is a tribal council meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so these resolutions here for the general council is moot, meaning they don't mean anything because we don't have a general council?
Because we don't have a quorum, yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Could I get clear on something also, Chief? This is a tribal council meeting, it turns into a tribal council meeting automatically if we don't have a general council quorum, is that it?
Did last year, and the year before that.
Well, I know, but I never ever...
Year before that, and the year before that.
Well, I never heard it called a tribal council meeting, that was kind of technical. I've never heard it called a tribal council meeting specifically like that, that we've identified it now, it's evolved into that. I mean, could we discuss that a bit? I didn't know, I just, I mean, I've never heard anything officially, and now we're identifying and calling it something official. And it's not a regularly scheduled meeting, so therefore we'd make it a specially called meeting, which means you have to have five days advance notice to call a special meeting. So that's what I don't understand.
Well, I've actually, it's a general council meeting is called in November, a Saturday in November every year.
But the meaning of general council means all Delawares, not the tribal council. Right.
True.
So, I mean, I'm not trying to propose an argument, I just wanted some clarification on this because we did, I mean, I don't ever remember it called a tribal council meeting, and that's what we're calling today.
Okay, well, and I don't think it matters what we call it.
Okay, well, that's fine, that's fine.
We can't vote from the floor, only votes can be taken up here, which, that part is like a council, a council meeting, not a general council.
Well, Bonnie, how can we, how can we take a vote if it's not a specially called meeting or a regularly scheduled tribal council meeting, is what I'm asking.
Charles?
Yes, I have two thoughts. One, it's my understanding that we always had a general council meeting and then a regular council meeting after the whole of the general council meeting.
Well, only if it was specially called.
Another point that I was going to make was on the three minutes we talked about, could I suggest rather than dismissing that you make it three minutes and then you ask the group to vote whether they want to continue it or not? To keep having a lot of stuff in this bag on and on? But if everyone, if you have a majority of the group here says that they don't want to continue this, then the truth is cut it off at that point?
Yeah, Charles, can you come up to the microphone?
Sure. My suggestion was that rather than dismiss the three minutes, that we keep it intact and at the end of three minutes, ask the council group, the entire group, if they would like to continue that discussion. If they would, you go ahead and continue it. If you don't, then the three-minute limit still stands. And my reason for that is that we could get into some discussions here that maybe one or two people are interested in, that could just last the afternoon. I'd like to see that not happen. But if it is something that is interesting to the group, I think we should go ahead and continue. I'll leave that up to the councils to make that decision.
Okay, I have just a bit of a problem in my thinking with that, Charles. It was two minutes on the 2012 agenda for general council, and we increased it to three, but if people want to come up, as long as we don't get into a filibuster-type situation, and I think at that point, chief has the right to stop it, that last part gets powers.
As long as we leave the chief or leave that something in control so that we can't keep that going. But I don't want someone to say that, hey, the chief wasn't interested in this, so let's don't talk about it. That was my reason for having the group make their decision whether they wanted to go ahead and have it enough.
Okay, all right. Does a parliamentarian?
Is this a parliamentary question, Shannon?
As to whether you can go into a tribal council meeting or not, that is not addressed in your constitution as going directly into a tribal council meeting. According to Roberts rules, because then your constitution reverts to Roberts rules, according to Roberts rules, all you could do, once you establish there is not a quorum here, would be to adjourn. If your precedence has been in the past that you continue to discuss things, you can discuss them, but you cannot take any action or make any motions on those things, because that's the precedence that you may have had in the past. However, Roberts rules would have said that you would need to adjourn.
Do I hear a motion?
Thank you.
Of this tribal council to officially adjourn?
I'd make that motion.
I second it.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Would the ayes show their hands? All not in favor, please say no.
No.
No. That means we have, that means that the general council has already been adjourned for lack of a quorum. And...
Just discussion.
I actually think we should ask one other question. Can we legally call this a tribal council meeting? Can we legally call this a tribal council meeting?
If it's not been posted as a tribal council meeting, and you have not posted it for your constituents to see that it's been called, no, you cannot.
I need a clarification, I thought we just said we were not gonna adjourn the general council. It asked that we were not adjourned, is that right? It was four, five people did not wanna adjourn the general council, so what are we gonna do now?
We're gonna have a discussion.
Oh, okay, yeah. So just... They can get up and speak their mind.
We're not gonna run our tribal members out here.
No, I didn't... And I think they all deserve a chance to be heard, whether we can vote on anything or not.
Well, I thought maybe we would adjourn the general council, and then we have the open discussion, so it's not misstrued as a general council meeting either. I don't, I mean, it's fuzzy to me, what we're doing.
Well, I don't know, did the parliamentarians say it was automatically adjourned if there's not a quorum?
Generally, it would automatically be adjourned.
Okay.
And then, like I said, the precedent that you've set in the past is that you allow discussion, that you cannot take any motions or take any action on the discussion.
So technically, we're adjourned, but we can sit here and listen to discussions?
Okay, yeah.
All right, so that last motion is kind of a moot point then.
Shall we take that vote over the table?
That would also mean, of course, that this tribal council can take no official action.
That's right, right.
Another suggestion that's been made is that maybe you just call it a town hall meeting?
Right.
Well, should we not erase that last vote we took on the adjournment? If it was, if it wasn't, didn't serve any purpose, why would we ever, why do we follow through? I know we, but we don't have to adjourn it, she said it's automatically adjourned if we don't have a quorum. So then we took a vote that said we didn't wanna, we didn't want to close it, so...
It doesn't matter?
Well, I mean, it's just...
Well, actually, we have no official capacity to take a vote on any kind.
That's why I say so, why don't we just erase that vote?
But, I would suggest to everybody, that's this tribal council and everybody in the audience, would everybody agree to have a town hall meeting?
I will say that as far as your minutes for in the future, even if you don't show a vote actually being taken, you do need to reflect what time the meeting was officially adjourned.
Motion was made about 1:45, so I'm gonna...
I, we're gonna open this to comment, however, there's actually three people, well, there's two people that turned in items for discussion, Michelle Holly has got a couple of items that...
We can't conduct business at this time, so it's pretty much a moot point. I will retain this information and present it to the council for a view. Oh, sorry. The items that I've brought forth today that I had added to the agenda are basically moot points, since there cannot be any vote taken on this MOU, so I will present it at the next virtual tribal council meeting. On the 17th. Oh my gosh, okay, sorry, can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay, so the items that I have on the agenda, there is an MOU that I would like to discuss, since the parliamentarian has decided or informed us that we cannot conduct business today because there is no quorum, that I will retain this information and present it at the next tribal council meeting on the 17th.
Jack, take it.
I'd like to point out that...
Can you please go to the microphone, please?
Where is it?
Up here, yes.
Thank you, thank you.
So if anybody else does wanna speak, will you please approach the microphone once she calls upon you?
Okay, I'd like to point out for the rest of us...
Push the button, Jack.
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, one of the things that is clear, we cannot conduct tribal business today. We can only talk to one another, and that's great. But I tell you, from my point of view, and I hope it's from many of you too, that I'd like to bring back our general council meetings. We haven't had a general council meeting for, I think, for years, because we have not been able to get a quorum together of a hundred people standing out here on the floor, so we could submit a resolution from the floor, which would mean something. But we don't have that situation anymore, and the only way we could get that situation back again, from what I've been told, I'm not absolutely sure, but I've been told, we have to change our constitution. And to change our constitution is not gonna happen from the tribal council. It will only happen from the people, which means that we have to have at least a, let's see, a hundred...
Petition for a hundred.
A petition for a hundred people to, I mean, sign before we can get this submitted, that we can at least, I mean, Annette, can you help me with this?
Well, the way I understand, the constitution reads that if we want to change the constitution, we have to petition, and a hundred people sign a petition, present to the secretary, she makes sure that they're all members, and then the tribal council has, or the tribe has to send out a referendum to all voting members to vote on that. Yes, they have to have a two-thirds majority for it to pass.
Two-thirds, the majority of our tribal membership?
Yes, well, of the vote, of the votes.
Of the voters.
Well, of the votes, the people that vote, the voters.
Two-thirds of receive votes.
Okay. Two-thirds of the voters, which is how many thousands of people?
No, 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 just the ones who vote.
Of the votes cast.
If a hundred people vote, then two-thirds of that, sixty-six, oh, like, two.
How many, does anybody know how many people we got voting?
Jack, can I say that fine, we've got multiple people speaking here. We have ten thousand eight hundred right over that, members. We only need two-thirds of a, two-third, oh. We only need two-thirds of the votes that we receive back to approve.
Approximately seven thousand voters, the other ones are under eighteen, yeah, yeah.
So we think we've got a thousand voters?
Yeah, a thousand people voted, six hundred of sixty-six, six, what, six hundred thousand?
Six hundred and sixty-six.
Six hundred and sixty-six. Six hundred and sixty-six, six hundred votes, yes.
One's two-thirds of a hundred.
Right, okay, I said two, sixty-six.
It's confusing, it's, it looks like we're never gonna have a general council meeting again. And I'm really sorry for that, disappointed for our tribe, if that's the case. If that's not the case, I think we need somebody to organize a petition that we can get started and actually, so we can have a general council meeting again in the future. The general council meeting, from what I understand, is the only time that the people, the people can submit a resolution. That's the only time, otherwise, it's just these people up here that can submit a resolution. And if they all, if the five or six or seven of them all agree on something, we're in deep poop.
Thank you, Jack.
Tell them I'm here, it's Jack. Well, one of the arguments that happened when they made this hundred-person quorum, which stifled the tribe so badly, is that people would come to the meeting, and maybe there'd only be seventy-five people or sixty-five people, and then the rest of the people that didn't even come would gripe, well, you can't have sixty-six people making decisions for the whole tribe. Well, we can't have anybody making them right now, so sixty-six is better than none. So I still think that if, if we could, I think it's a good idea to change this.
I would say even lower than fifty.
Need a lower than fifty?
Well, I...
We're doing good today with fifty-five at this point.
Right, and for the initiative petition, it needs to state the changes that need made, not just an initiative petition to change the constitution. Because we do have the KU, I spoke with Susie Cade this morning, and communicated with her, and we do have the KU students looking at that to come back, and we would certainly like to have some town hall meetings to get input from everybody, and maybe then come up with more than one change. I mean, that's a pretty good expense if we just change the one thing about the quorum. I think we need to look at the whole document, because it's a bad document. So, it's very outdated, so I think all those things need wrapped into one referendum vote.
It would be nice if we could vote on this at all the changes that need to be made at the next general election, which I think is here today. It is on our action log every Monday. We are waiting for the KU students to free themselves up from child support. I'm looking over at Curtis, and I think they have pretty well completed. And I think the next task is for them to, we start a process to amending or voting on a revised constitution. And we need to hear from everybody. One of the problems that you're gonna run into is that we have ten thousand members, seven thousand adult members, and we're gonna have to devise a process whereby we can involve everyone who wants to be, you know, to express their opinion. And we're gonna have to come up, undoubtedly, it's gonna be like we did the, I wasn't there at that time, but I've read about it when we did the United States Constitution. Annette and I weren't quite there, but there are a lot of compromises that'll have to be made. But we've got to revise, this document served well one time, but it does not serve us well today. Well, if we're gonna do it, we better get started.
That's right, Jack.
And Jack, as soon as Curtis tells that he's finished, we're ready to put the law students to work. All right.
Nate, we did get that word that they are through, isn't that what you told us, Charles? Yeah, so they're already looking at ours.
John Sumter.
For those that don't know me, my name is John Sumter. We've had, and still have, as tribal mentors, very qualified people to do this. We don't have to stand on KU students that do not know our tribal history, do not know our constitution. And I'm gonna recommend you get hold of Mr. Rusty Brown. Not only has he accomplished in our history, he's helped the child, wrote actually, the Child Enforcement Act, which is the model that's been followed by most of the tribes in this area. He was a tribal judge at one time. This is poor background, certain things happened, and he quit and left. But who is the chief justice, who's the highest ranking one here at this time? Mr. Mason. Did you know that he wrote and submitted a Delaware Tribal Court's Rules of Civil Procedure back in '06? That's when Art Stowe was head of it and everything. Now, I don't know, but there would've been followed, and I've got a copy of it here, but I don't even know it's been followed by the court, that's not my area. But that's something you should look into. He not only did it for us, he did it for the Sackin box, and he did it for the Osages. He is a tribal member, why do not? I mean, I can't understand why we have the resources within our own tribe that we step outside of our tribe to get it done. This man has had our interest at heart ever since he came back and offered to serve for this tribe. And I darn well bet he would come back and serve again if approached in the right way and for the right reasons. And that's what I would recommend, you get hold of Mr. Rusty Brown, talk to him. He's, I mess with him, I call him almost a lawyer. He has passed everything, except he did not take the bar. He didn't want to, and I can understand it. I majored in law enforcement, but when I come out, I didn't wanna be a cop. So I understand his reasoning was on that. But he is knowledgeable in law, especially Indian law. So I suggest to the tribal council at this time, face up, that's who you go to. And if y'all wanna copy this civil procedures document he wrote, I've got it right here. Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. Mr. Sumter, I was unaware that Rusty Brown was interested in helping out with the code revisions and revising the constitution. If he's interested in helping, that's, I think that's perfectly fine. But you also have to keep in mind that, first of all, the University of Kansas Law School actually approached us. We have a professor of law who is a licensed attorney in two states, and she has four to five second and third-year law students who are quickly on their way to graduating from law school and setting for a barb then, who are willing to help us out at no charge at all. Now, if Rusty wants to help us out pro bono, I have no problem with that. But you have to keep in mind, though, that the work that we're doing right now, we have less than a shoestring budget. And so where we're getting help, I welcome it. If Mr. Brown wants to help, I welcome it wholeheartedly. But I will have to warn him that we are not paying KU any money. And as far as the judges are concerned, we really, we get very little compensation. We don't do trips anymore at all, because we don't want to spend money. We wanna make sure that what little money we have, we wanna use for good and worthwhile things. It's a lot easier for us, and don't let this sound like a criticism at all, but it's a lot easier for us to utilize the University of Kansas Law School, not only with a licensed attorney, but an attorney who probably has her LLM, which is an additional year of law school, and who has, and who is a professor of law, who is willing to work for us at zero dollars per hour. Because if we retained someone like that, I guarantee you, John, she would've charged us at least five or six hundred bucks an hour, given her credentials. And those law students, that they would, they'd probably be qualified as paralegalists. And those law students, that they would, they'd probably be qualified as paralegals, and each one of those paralegals would be charging us a hundred and fifty or a hundred and seventy-five bucks an hour, just the paralegals. And they were willing to sacrifice all of those legal fees to help us out. Now, I agree with you. I wholeheartedly endorse the idea of fellow Delawares helping Delawares. And I like the idea of him helping out. And I wholeheartedly embrace and endorse the idea of helping, of him helping us. I welcome him, although the red carpet out orange. But you got to keep in mind, though, while we're revising and we're updating our judicial system, there's no money. We're not, we can't, there's not going to be any money there for any contract for anybody. Child support, they did have money. That's how they were able to contract with a legal firm. That's child support. That's not judiciary. We don't have the money to contract with anybody, whether it's a paralegal or a lawyer. But as long as anyone who wants to get involved and understands that this is all going to be pro bono, I wholeheartedly endorse it. So, and I think it'd be great to have a fellow Delaware working on it. I think that would, it'd actually be kind of a nice seal of approval in the indirect sort of way. It'd be a good thing to have a Delaware working on it. I think that's a good and healthy thing to have going on. So I like your idea. I hold it wholeheartedly, agree with it. He can get ahold of me or any of the other judges, and we can, you know, put him to work. Only problem is, though, is he may have to pay bills. He may have to eat, and we don't have the money to pay him, that's all. So, but anyway, we are making progress. Professor Kronk, the lady I'm speaking about, she's been willing to help us out in a lot of ways. She still remains ready to help out, and I appreciate what they're doing. And again, they're not being compensated. They're giving, they're doing all of this for the Delaware people, zero dollars. So I think it's a great thing that they're helping us, and if Mr. Brown wants to help out with the professor and the law students, like I said, we can all get together and get all of our contact info, we can get to work. But again, there ain't, there's no money.
Can you pass that on to Rusty?
Yeah, John, Rusty still works for Phillips up in Alaska, doesn't he?
Yes, he does. Can I respond without having to go back up there?
Sure.
I know I can darn well be heard. For one, I've never even mentioned salary or fight. That bill says, as I recommended, that you get hold of it. I'm not an intermediary. Well, I guess I can in a way since I recommended it. But talking, I don't know if these attorneys, the paralegals, whatever they may be, are versed in Indian law. That was a stated, that is a whole different ballgame than white law, as far as I know. So that's all I got to say to that.
I would think that after the KU students finish their draft, it will, it won't be a final, and I think it would be a good opportunity to open it up and let people like Rusty take a look at it and, you know, just make sure that we're all on the same, same target because there's, it will be, there needs to be a lot of changes that affects not only, it affects every single one of us and the future state of our tribe. So I do like the idea of letting the KU students work on it, draft it, and then let somebody that does know Indian law like Rusty take a look at it.
Don Mason.
Professor Kronk at the University of Kansas Law School heads up in Lake, called the Indian Law Institute. She also helps all sorts of other Indian tribes throughout the country. So she is perfect, she's versed in Indian law. The lady who founded that institute was a former member of the Cherokee Nation Supreme Court, and she was also a former member of, I think, the Choctaw Nation Supreme Court. She was dean of the law school. That lady has since now went on to be dean of the University of Arkansas. But Professor Kronk took her place to run the Indian Law Institute, University of Kansas. Anytime, you're right, John, anytime that you start, when you go into an Indian tribe or an Indian nation, you have to be very aware and very cognizant of who they are, what their background is, what their culture is, and I, this is my feeling, my opinion, I feel very comfortable that Professor Kronk has been trained in that, considering that they have a Indian Law Institute, University of Kansas, which serves Indian tribes throughout the Midwest, the West, and even up in Alaska. And no, I don't think the court would be agreeable to her. If she was not cognizant of who we are and our ways, then that wouldn't work at all. But I see where you're coming from, and she knows Indian law, and I trust her in that regard, especially considering she runs an institute that advises all of these other Indian tribes and nations throughout the country.
So it's good to know that she does have Indian law in her background. How do you spell her last, her name?
Kronk. K-R-O-N-K.
O-N-K.
Professor Kronk.
Thank you.
She's at University K, KU Law School.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that info. Like I said, I did not know that.
Susan.
I think people can hear me too as I'm talking. I agree with you on the qualifications of your people with KU, but I agree also with John that Rusty Brown knows the Delaware tribe and its history. So the issue of him, of the KU people drafting and let Rusty look at the final. Short and sweet, he knows our tribe, let them do their thing, and let Rusty make his recommendations at the end, if that's what he chooses to do.
Not only...
But the thing is, somebody's got to contact Rusty to see if he wants to do it. So I would like to see someone up here on the council make, who is going to approach Rusty with his recommendation.
Nikki's going to follow up.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Nikki.
Jack Tatum.
Yeah, I appreciate, one of the things is, I really appreciate, you know, how, I think the term pro bono, and people, I'd like to point out that I have a cousin, Les Reynolds, that has practiced tribal law and has practiced for tribal law with other tribes. And if we could get our Delaware attorneys together somehow and where they could work, work with these KU people, I think we possibly could come up with really a legal and a great constitution.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Jack.
I know another Delaware attorney.
Yes. Nancy, there was one behind you there.
My name's Les Shaw. I live in Augusta, Kansas, and I may not be too smart. Mr. Mason, I agree with you with your person from KU and whatever. John, I agree with you with the individual Rusty Brown. I heard the comments, one was talking about money, and one was just asking to get ahold of Rusty, whatever. Mr. Mason, you said, "I would be glad to talk to Mr. Brown if he would get ahold of me." You're one of our legal people, correct? And you was working on this. Where I work at my company, the boss will come to me and tell me to ring the phone to get somebody to come and talk to him. All I ask is the phone goes both ways. So instead of you waiting for Mr. Brown to come to visit with you, if you would like to get some of his input, make a phone call. And it's not, it's not anything that's going to be disrupting what we do, not at all. And I think this way he can maybe get a little bit of input from that. It doesn't mean that you have to take his recommendation or KU's recommendation because ultimately, it's going to be decided by the Delaware people, the people on the council. And the other thing, to the Idaho people and the people from Kansas, I'm okay, I live in Kansas, that's all. Welcome. I hope that this made some sense in trying to get things lined up so we can have the Delaware people have a tribe that can work together and not get nitpicking over things of little or not major importance. Thank you.
Nancy, you have your...
Are we through with this lawyer changing stuff? And I got to tell you, I got something else I want to talk about.
Let's change the section. We're exhausted.
Yeah, I'm kind of exhausted. My, I've got questions, lots of questions. Has Rusty deal with the land in Kansas? I have heard that they were contracts that was wrote and renewed, I don't quite have a say this, other than rolling contracts. I want to know who drew up that contract, and is it true that that contract is renewed every thirty days indefinitely? I will also want to know, how much did they pay? How much did we pay for the land? And I don't want answers this time. I don't want no good moroni him hauling around. How much did they pay for the land? How much is it worth now? If we sell it, do we lose, like we always lose, because of the stupid contract that people put out there? And I would say stupid, because this is, I don't know that much about contracts, but I do know that when these people are making money off that land that we owe, and they're only paying us, say, one-third of what they're making, and they renew this contract every thirty days, it's ridiculous. I want to know who wrote the contract. I want to know how they come up with the rolling thirty-day contract. I also want to know why we were not told about the land being bought until that was after it was already bought. This is ridiculous. We're the tribe, we should know where our money goes. We should know. I get, I get a little upset, and I just, I just want to jump up and jack smack some people because they got no stance. This is ridiculous if this is true. I want to know if it's true, who wrote it, is it a rolling contract? What's our land worth? What did we pay? I want answers this time. I don't want, I don't want no more playing around.
Chief.
I will be staying on this all the time until I can all answer the I want.
Right. Uh, Chief, go ahead.
Were you finished, Nancy? I think Assistant Chief Redd was...
The contract is online. If you go to the website, and it's got Kansas Land Purchase one and two, the contract's in there. I don't know who wrote it. It was signed by former Chief Chonik. It is an eighteen-month lease, you can read in there, that renews every, the first of every month. I believe we paid 1.2 million dollars for the land. That's, that's what I keep hearing. I don't know what it's worth. I wanted to have it appraised, but that was going to be a couple of thousand dollars, and I think we talked about it at a meeting and decided to wait. And we get twenty-five hundred dollars a month from the Pine family for the lease.
Is that every month?
Every month.
Nancy, I would also like to go on the record and say, I was, I don't recall whenever we decided that we were going to put the appraisal on hold. What was the reason for that? What was the cost?
It was the cost.
It was like two, four thousand.
How much did you guys spend on the trips that you have been going on?
What was the, Alan, what was the cost to, for the appraisal?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
I think, I would think we would need to. We really need to, our tribal members and me as well, I would like to find out what the value of that land is, considering we paid over a million dollars for it. We need to know what the, what the value of the land is that we have currently.
We have been told that it's worth a lot less than what we paid for it. I think that's a given.
Yeah, I think that's expected.
Yeah, County Commissioner, actually.
The next question I've got is, where is the land that's supposed to be set in the middle by railroad tracks?
That was in Ulgaal there, this, not by railroad tracks. Actually, that belongs under the Housing Department, that land in Ulgaal, and that needs to have a survey done on it. Last time I talked to Ron, but that is housing, that is land that belongs to the Housing Department.
Well, I think we need to get all this land appraised, find out where it's at, and if we need to, if that's land, I call it landlock, if it's surrounded by other places and you don't have an access road to it, that land's not doing us no good. So I would say, if you're not going to be using it, God, sell it.
Yeah. That's on Ron's radar.
Right, and I had a gentleman from Ulgaal call me two weeks ago and leave me a message that he owns the car wash that the property adjoins ours, and he wanted to come over. He was supposed to come over last week, but he didn't, and sit down, and he thinks he knows a way to get more out of our land and more out of his land. So I haven't seen him, but he's supposed to come over sometime to talk to Chief. No, he's, he just... Yeah, he's got, so I don't know how that'll work out, but he wanted to come visit, so... We'll listen.
If there is... Davis.
This is one, two, three, four. Okay. To the land in Kansas of the older tribe, the twenty-five hundred dollars that the tribe is realizing from the sod farm, it comes into the tribe, twenty-five hundred dollars a month, but we still don't have money to help our lawyer. He'll appear to do a constitution report. Years ago, historically, back in the seventies, when I sat at the University of California at Davis, we were reading about the Navajo Nation, they took on a program to instill or put twenty members of their tribe into law school each year and fund them fully. Of course, we can't do that because God's not able to get twenty-five hundred dollars a month. However, once the lawyers did graduate, they came back to the tribe, their...